There it is. All right, so we'll call the facade committee, subcommittee meeting to order for November 9th. Roll call, Alderman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Mamone.
Here.
Alderman Schuer also here. So we have 100% attendance. So we had one, one application, which it was, that was in the Zoom packet. And I sent it out again to you guys, but do we have any questions up front on any of the items there? I can put it up online here as well.
No, I don't have any questions, Josh.
Sheila, she didn't need to do anything to the outside of the building?
She is, she, she, you know, because I said, you know, we haven't changed the, the guidelines for the, for the facade loan and she then came back to us and said.
Alderman.
What?
Hey, pipe down there, Rivers.
Pipe down, Rivers. She then came back to us with this application and if you take a look at the improvements she's making.
The leased property, leased, opening a cafe, serving coffee, alcoholic beverages and food. And then the list of items is on, I think, the fifth page.
No, I got that. And I see it's blinds and things of that nature. I was asking about the outside.
Oh, like a awning or something.
signage or something. I didn't see anything that.
Yeah, no, she didn't, she didn't have any of that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, front outside blinds, outdoor banner.
Doors.
Labor, yeah, the door, door closer.
Okay.
And it was a little bit over 5,000, but you can only, the maximum was five, so. And then this very high level drawing, but better than what we, hey, better than what we received from 99% of other applicants.
Agreed.
Now, there's an attempt, these aren't, this isn't a graphic artist class, it's, you know, it's a business. So what's your pleasure, guys?
I, I, I make a motion that we accept the application.
Second.
Motion by Strowman, second by Mamone, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
So John, do we pass this to the full board then?
Yes.
Okay, I'll add that at the beginning of the agenda then.
Thank you, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, why? Stay here, because this is the same link.
Don't go anywhere.
Oh, I didn't know it was the same one. All right.
Same bat time, same bat channel.
All right.
Same bat.
I knew that was coming, Tony.
Am I that predictable, Chicago? I need to up my game, I guess.
Well, no, you know, we're like, you know, peas and pod together.
Well, at least I'm in good company, Chicago.
There you go. I am too.
And you don't like the Cowboys, so we definitely got that going for us.
Yeah, yeah, them girls, uh, exactly what they are, them cowgirls.
Too strange.
I'd like to call the full Board of Alderman meeting for November 9th, 2021 to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge your agents.
Do the flag.
Republic.
Stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fresh, can we get roll call?
Aldermen and women. King.
Present.
Stowe. Phipps.
Present.
Tar.
Yeah.
Cassetti.
Here.
Genetti. Spigorolo. Strowman.
Present.
Yowman.
Here.
Rivers.
Yeah.
Mamone.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Blackwell. De Libro. You have nine present, five absent.
Excuse me, I'm here.
Oh, you have 10 present. Four absent.
Thanks, Fresh.
Welcome, Justin.
I declare quorum. Before we get started, I want to add a few items to the agenda. The facade loan committee met before this meeting, so I'd like to add, under new business, facade application for right. Also like that to stop. And I'd like to add, under executive session, like to add 48 Silver Hill Road. And I'd like to remove executive session number two. We won't discuss that tonight. So moving on, we have the consideration of the previous minutes from the, was it October 12th meeting, 2021, which were sent out, I think, last week.
Motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Motion to accept by Mamone, second by Strowman, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries unanimously. Josh, do you need a motion to add those items to the agenda?
I just did it, but if you feel better, we could do that, too. Probably, probably should, but it's water under the bridge at this point, Tony.
Okay.
So, let's see, public, let's see. Yeah, public session. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? It's kind of mayhem with all the noise here. Just get our attention somehow. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
Please provide a name and address for public record, and please limit your statements to three minutes or less.
It's Stella Jacaruso, 305 Kimberly Lane. I'm here with my father, Joseph Jacaruso, same address. We were just following up to see any update on the issue with our road.
Okay, so that issue, we've spoken about a bunch of times. So that went to planning and zoning. And during their meeting, they sent it to Corporation Council. And I believe Corporation Council, where does it stand from there?
So it needs to go back to PZ. I need PZ to give a recommendation. They just can't pass it back off to staff or to the Board of Aldermen. So I will be at the next meeting to ensure that one way or the other, they give a recommendation. And then it will be back to this board, as at the end of the day, whether it's a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation, this board has the final say. And with a super majority can actually overrule planning and zoning. So it's important to understand, we need to follow that process. But at the same time, this board will have the final say in terms of whether or not the city will accept this, this driveway as an official city road. And that will be public comment opportunities at planning and zoning, and of course, back at this Board of Aldermen, once we have it on the agenda for a decision. And that will be.
We all, we also should have a completed title search by then, I'm sure.
Our preliminary investigation has basically revealed that the driveway does not appear to be the specific responsibility of any of the residents or the city. Which does put it into this limbo position. And I do think it's properly up for discussion here, because there, I agree, there's a legitimate question as to who it belongs to. But, you know, I can tell you, you know, a preview of what I found is, is there's no evidence one way or the other, which makes it truly a, a piece of property with no owner. So I think we need it, we, it's perfect to clarify, but we're going to follow the process. And in December, we will be concluding the process here at the board. But I want you to know that you'll have a voice at both the planning and zoning hearing and this board. And so, you know, we'll all be along till the end.
Okay, so you're saying that at the P&amp;Z meeting at the end of the month, you will be there and say, you know, you want them to vote on it. And so then at the next Alderman meeting for next month, you're saying that we'll, we'll basically, you know, have some resolution, we're hoping.
Exactly. I'm going to be insisting, highly recommending on a recommendation, one way or the other, being made at the next PZ.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Um, anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Hey, Josh, can you hear me?
I hear a voice, but I don't see. Yes, Brian, name and address for the public record, please.
Yes, Brian Perkins, 6 West Road.
Go ahead.
So I just want to say, um, you know, despite like the slander and harassment perpetrated against me by some Team Cassetti supporters and Team Cassetti Aldermen, I do want to congratulate Mayor Cassetti and his team on your, the victory from November 3rd. Congratulations, guys, honestly. And I also want to thank Bill Phipps and Diane Strowman for their service, not just to this board, but to our community as a whole. And so it is a better place because of people like you guys, and I cannot thank you enough for everything you've done to ensure our community stays happy and taken care of. You guys have been working on our community for decades and it really means a lot to, to us, so thank you.
Thank you. And I would echo your sentiments that, congratulations to the board, to everyone, and thank you to Bill and Diane especially.
Okay.
Anyone else from the, from the board who wishes, or from the public who wishes to address the Board of Aldermen tonight? Second call, anyone from the public who'd wish to address the Board of Aldermen? And third and final call, anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public session and move on to the public official session, Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I also would like to welcome Anne Marie Dragonis, the first select woman of Seymour who's on tonight. I want to take a moment to recognize and thank some very deserving individuals who have helped with important and key projects here in Ansonia. I want to thank Chairman Heon and the members of the Police Building Committee, who volunteered their time and expertise to make the new PD building a success. I thank you for everything you have done. It is a project we all can be proud of. I want to thank Chief Wayne Williams for his swift action on getting the PD relocated and established at 65 Main Street. Under your leadership, we have made a smooth and seamless transition. I also want to thank Wayne for an admirable job he has done in a short time. He has been interim chief of the Police Department. I feel very, very confident with you at the helm, chief. Keep up the good work. I want to thank our register of voters over Dave Papson, the, the register of voters office of Dave Papson and Tom Mathieu, and the poll workers for making this past election run smoothly. Job well done. We appreciate the hard work that goes in behind the scenes. Last but not least, as Brian had mentioned, I want to thank Diane Strowman and Bill Phipps for their honorable service on the Board of Aldermen. We, we appreciate your input and ideas and hope you will remain active going forward. Diane, I know you will continue to help shepherd the senior center project through. Thank you for your service to the residents of Ansonia. This Thursday is Veterans Day, a federal holiday that honors all veterans who served in the armed forces. I want to take, I want to thank our veterans for their service to our great country. I don't want any of us to forget about the sacrifices they have made and continue to make to preserve our freedom. The United States is the land of the free and the brave, and I want to keep it that way. Our inaugural ceremony will be held on Sunday, November 28th at 6:00 PM at the Ansonia High School. I want to thank Superintendent Joe Dabaco, who is back and better than ever, and his staff for accommodating us. Joe, we are thrilled to have you back and look forward to continuing to work together for the betterment of our children. Everyone, happy Thanksgiving, and let's go Ansonia Football Chargers. Thank you and God bless you all.
Go Chargers.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Council, John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board, tonight, in executive session, we're looking at 48 Silver Hill Road. We had a positive 824 sometime back. We're simply to looking to finalize the transfer of a sliver of land to the prospective purchaser. On the Opera House, we're still in negotiations with the owner about the possibility of a long-term lease in favor of the city that could result in the city assisting with some improvements to the exterior and interior of the building. I hope to have an update by next meeting on that. Kurt and I are working on a revamped personnel policy. They were bouncing back and forth at this point. I hear someone talking.
Go quiet.
Hey, Joe.
November 28th.
No Cassetti, go on mute.
Hold on, Joe's checking his diary.
Can you mute? Can you mute, Josh?
I can.
Can't mute.
Oh, he's muted. Oh, no, he's not.
He's got him, got him. He's scheduling, he's scheduling. And speaking of scheduling, you know, obviously, we're very, Mayor went over the inauguration. We're very excited to, to be able to hold that at the high school on the 28th. We're also going to be having another big event coming up soon, and that is the grand opening of the Ansonia Armory. And a great opportunity to thank again Griffin Health and Pat Charmel for the generous donation here of services and work at the Armory. We've been inside at this point. I believe some of you may have a sneak, had, had a sneak peek as well. And it's really not even recognizable at this point, and the work is still not done. And it's showing on the exterior now as well with landscaping and other repairs. We don't have a date pinned down, but we believe it will occur in the month of likely either late November or maybe more likely early December, trying to get it ready and perfect. And of course, it still stands. We are looking for a free throw competition between Griffin and the city of Ansonia. And our captain, Dr. Josh Schuer, will be organizing that team. In addition to that personnel policy I was briefly mentioning, that we're hoping to put in front of you in December for first review. We're also looking at crafting an early retirement offer. We've done this in years past at different junctures. And we're going to be reviewing the details with you in the coming month. Everyone is very happy and thankful to Chief Williams and his team for a very speedy move in to the Ansonia Police Station. You may have seen, we put out a sneak preview video, thanks to HNN Productions, putting that together for us. And of course, we were thinking about when the date we were going to reveal as the, the grand opening would be the move in. And we were shocked that, that they learned it was within three days. And that's thanks to their work to really push this through and get our officers into their new home way sooner than we ever thought possible. Finally, you know, thank you to all the outgoing board members. I think this, this group of Aldermen truly had the city's best interests at heart at every turn. A lot of good work was accomplished. I think really the foundation of, of Anui and Sony was really set up with this very board, you know. So thank you to all those members staying and departing for working together. It was a privilege working together with all of you to get this worked on for the residents.
All right, any questions for Corporation Council tonight from the Aldermen?
Yeah, I, I do. And, um, I usually hold back on stuff, but I don't think I have to. But, um, at our last meeting, John, I guess I'm just asking you.
That was the extent of it.
I need you to.
And.
Can you mute? Looks like.
I think I have it muted.
David Rhodes.
Go ahead, Alderman Strowman.
Oh, okay. Um, at last month's meeting, there was a question that was asked of, Tony actually asked a question. And the question was about the Olsen Drive property. And the reason why I want to clarify it, because it was insinuated, there were some of us on the board who seemed to be confused or, or was saying some things that weren't exactly true. And it was about the fact about the property, a deal already being made about the Olsen Drive property. So when we walked away from that meeting, there was an understanding, based on John, your response, that there was no deal, correct?
Exactly, and there is none. There is no finalized deal. I think I kind of have an idea, because the question sort of came up on another channel earlier.
Let me finish asking, let, let me finish asking it, though. Okay? Um, so there's no deal, but during this campaign, there was a publication that was put out that showed the property and showed the building for 2023. Now, you talk about confused. If you're saying there is no deal, there's no plan in place, we haven't accepted anything. How can I put something out there that is reflecting that this is going to be happening? So, John, can you help me explain?
Definitely.
Can I?
Definitely. There's, in terms of, I'll, I'll let Sheila address as well, but you know, in terms of what the Board of Aldermen has acted on, there is no, there is no agreement. This Board of Aldermen needs to engage in negotiations and has to reach a final result. However, a political party, you know, voicing their position, you know, and their intention as to what they would like to accomplish is different, right? And that very much depends, of course, on whether the political party is successful to be able to do so, right? That's the purpose of an election, putting those ideas out there. And so, you know, what was put out there in a political flyer was obviously the intention of the party telling the residents, hey, if elected, this is what we want to do. But in terms of what this board has authorized, yet to be authorized, right? So that party needs to make good on its promise if it's putting it out there to get it done. But there's a difference between a political, you know, something that's out there as a political promise, a political objective, and what this board has done. There is no agreement, there's no contract. A bidder was selected, but for that to become reality, the Board of Aldermen is going to have to negotiate and come to an agreement. So it very much is, is what it was last month, but, but yes, it was the expression of, of, right, a political party, the Republican Party, to get that done, to, to get that project done.
Confused the heck out of me. Thank you. I, I would just, I would just add, and I, I will say this with caution, that we had a formal bid process to which we received a response and we accepted that response. So I want to be careful about, I want to tell you that, yes, you have to negotiate an agreement with the developer, successful developers. But we did have a formal bid process for which we then told HUD that we are accepting that bid and that it, that that property would be used to create a recreational component or components. So just caution the board that we did have a bid, we, we, we presented to HUD and we, and they relied on that information when they gave the okay to allow the housing authority to, to, to sell the property to the city.
Now Sheila, in the instance that we cannot reach an agreement with the developer, we, we are essentially back to square one. We could open the bid process again and go back out and start all over and review our options as a city at that point, correct?
Yeah, yes, correct.
And you have, you have precedent to look at with this. Obviously, this Board of Aldermen chose to negotiate with, with Mr. Nasser Reno's company with respect to the ATP Palmer Building. And of course, that eventually was not the company that ended up getting the contract, because that negotiation did not bear fruit. It did not bear an agreement that was acceptable to all sides. So, you know, you're looking back, there's a vote of confidence to negotiate. And obviously, there's a hope to, to be able to accomplish the project for the good of the city, but until there's a deal, there's no deal, right?
And let me just add, is that, in addition to that, is that we did not accept a bid. We, there was an RFP, so a request for proposals. And what, there was a positive vote on the proposal that was submitted, not on any bids or any specifics or anything like that.
That's not what I hear Sheila saying.
We use bid and proposal sort of interchangeably. Their, their project proposal, you know, we consider a bid, a bid for the work, but it was an invitation to negotiate. You know, a contract has to be agreed upon for this to become a reality. And no, we're not there yet, obviously. We have not had that, that meeting or that vote.
Thank you.
Other questions for Corporation Council tonight from the Aldermen? All right, Economic Development Director Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Um, wanted to update you on SHW. I did, I don't know, Josh, if you could share those photos, but there are hundreds of drums that EPA has, has gathered together, some for, some which will be picked up by Connecticut Deep. Other drums containing bulk storage and overpacked containers are going to be shipped offsite. They made a lot of progress in the time that they were there and have cleared up quite a few, quite a few of the remaining issues with the, the storage tanks. Having said that, building 11 and 12, we'll be working on removing the asbestos from the piping in those buildings, whether we demolish or we keep those buildings, that asbestos has to be, the pipes either have to be wrapped or the asbestos has to be removed. That's the next step before we bring one of the next buildings down. So you will see some demolition coming up.
I don't have any pictures. Where, where, where am I pulling those from?
I don't know, I texted them to you and.
Sheila, which one is building 11? Can you?
Yeah, I don't have a, if I, I wish I could bring up on map, but building 11 is the building closest to the railroad tracks or closest to the, you know.
I'll make a note of it. I'll look it up. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I can share, I don't have, I.
That's okay. It's okay. We're, I'm going to post the pictures because it's incredible how many drums they, they've pulled out of those buildings. Just hundreds of, hundreds of barrels. And now that that's done, that's paved the way for us to do the prep work for the, for the demolition of that site. So that's SHW. Just wanted to give you a quick recap on that and what's happening. On Fri, we, we anticipate that on Friday, we will have plans. We will have drawings and we will have cost estimates for the splash pad and the rehab, the renovations to the Nolan Field Park area. So we'll share that with all of you as well, the, the architect and engineer have finished, received pricing on all of that. And we'll be sending that to us for your review before we proceed with the work. And hopefully, some of it can get done before, you know, it's too cold. Um, let's see. We did, we did, we were in contact with the, with the owner of the Big Y Shopping Plaza. He assures us that he is getting closer to allowing us to be able to announce at least that we have a, a new tenant in there. So that should be very exciting, keeping our fingers crossed for that. Riverwalk is complete, waiting on the lighthouse and the installation of that. And got a few grants in the hopper. I'll, I'll report on those next month as I get letters of, letters of interest, not letters of interest, but excuse me, letters of intent to apply for grants that are upcoming. Brownfields, infrastructure and roads. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have those Toxic Avenger photos you sent me. Hang on one second.
I know, I just, it's, it's fine. I don't think, I mean.
No, I have them here, so.
Okay.
They're pretty sweet.
Yeah, everything's.
There's some radioactive people in the back.
Yeah, all, all of those buildings have been cleaned out with debris, the debris and the metal and all of that to make way for EPA wrap up the hazardous material removal. Anne Marie, pipe in if you, if you have any thoughts on all of this.
Who's hauling the material away?
I think hygienics, I believe it's hygienics. And deep is taking a lot of it as well.
So deep is heading off as a responsible party?
Yeah, according to EPA, yes. They're taking, they're taking some of the waste and so is EPA.
Okay, as long as the city of Ansonia is not going to be held. Okay, as long as the City of Ansonia is not going to be held, their night, their name is not going on the manifest as a generator.
It is not.
Okay. That's my concern. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions for Sheila tonight from the Aldermen?
Sheila, you got any teasers on, uh, the Big Y?
Anybody else have any questions? Tony, anything? You got anything for me?
Does it end with, does it end with cheese?
Guys. All right, let's see. Who's next?
Sheila. Update on what's going on with the senior center?
Yeah, so that, so I have the plans and specs in my office. Uh, last communication I received yesterday was that we were going forward with Olympus. They are going to come around and come to the table and do as the, uh, architect and the owner's rep have asked them to do with a few items that they, they had issue over. So, um, we'll get, we'll get, I know I've said it before, but we'll get to the contract signing shortly. But I think, um, we've all made a decision that we're going with a low bidder. And, um, they're coming around, they're swapping out stuff that the architect didn't like. So they've made a good faith effort to try to, try to get the bid to where it needs to be. So I think we're going with Olympus.
Sheila?
Yes.
Did Derby make a decision whether they were coming in with us or not?
They, they did not. They did not.
They didn't make a decision or they're not?
They did not make a, they did not make a decision. They, I don't, I, I believe they haven't met yet this month. I don't know when, I think, actually, I think they might meet this week, right?
Meet Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. So they, they told us post, uh, you know, the Nov- at the November meeting that they would have a decision. So, you know. That's up to them. Um, if they want to come along. Thank you. It would be nice, but not necessary.
Other questions for Sheila tonight from the Aldermen? All right, Chief Fiscal Officer Kurt Miller.
Yeah, I have, uh, one question for her.
Too late.
Uh, I think we're going to Kurt. Kurt's, uh, doesn't have a lot of time. He's.
Uh, go ahead, Chicago.
I would like to defer my time to, uh.
Dirty.
No, go ahead, Kurt. I was just messing with him.
All right. Okay, I'm back.
Hey, it's really not a problem.
Thanks, Kurt.
You're welcome. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all the board members and others in attendance. Uh, finances continuing to work on the fiscal, uh, 21 audit. Preliminary work is being finalized and we hope to have testing begin in the next week or two. We're currently on schedule to have the audit completed by the end of December, assuming none unforeseen circumstances. I'll provide a final update for you at the December meeting. Uh, work on the fiscal year 23 budget continues. I've already, already received budget requests from several departments and I've been in contact to answer questions from a few others as they prepare for their December 6 deadline. Everything seems to be progressing smoothly at this point. And I'll continue to provide updates in the December and January meeting just to keep you, uh, in the loop of what's going on. Uh, the HR audit process will begin next Wednesday, November 17th, with a kickoff meeting to discuss timelines and needed paperwork and access for our consultants. The actual audit itself will not begin until February after the mayor's budget is presented. As you can imagine, year end is an extremely busy time for the finance staff. And I wanted to make sure we're not over committing our resources. Uh, we expect to have results back in early spring for review and discussion. And the consultants have even offered to come in and do a presentation, uh, for the Board of Aldermen and to take their questions. Uh, the time and attendance project will be giving a new start date of January 1st. Uh, we've been shooting for December 1st, but with all the other projects going on, we didn't want to rush and have a poor kickoff. We plan to start with the City Hall staff to work out any kinks and then roll it out to the library and the nature center. And then finally to DPW Police and Arms. Those are obviously the three most challenging because of the different shifts and things like that. Uh, so we wanted to get everything squared away before we roll it out to them. And I'll provide additional information and updates at the December meeting, uh, to provide any information that you may need. So I have a few other, uh, items on the agenda that I'll be discussing with you. So with that, I'll end my report and see if there are any questions.
Do we have questions for CFO Miller from the Aldermen tonight?
Yes, uh, Josh, I have a question, well, more of a comment. Every audit that I've been privileged to see, um, and read, um, hasn't, has had an error in it in that the description of our budget making process is incorrect. In fact, it is the old description that goes way back. And I would ask, uh, that Mr. Miller can, uh, facilitate, um, with the, uh, auditors and if anything, have them, uh, report what the real process is, if nothing more than just to perpetuate historical references. But, um, I, I, I've tried emails and whatever, and it seems like their cut and paste function is still working and they're going to have to repair it. And, um, I would hope that, uh, that can be taken care of.
I, I'm just not sure what you mean by that statement, Alderman Pips.
If you go into the budget right now.
Pay the right information. Are you talking about the budget or the audit?
I'm sorry, audit. If I said budget, uh, excuse me.
Yeah, so.
The audit has been wrong for about six years in the narrative on how it is built. And you can simply go, I threw on page 22 or something. And, um, it appears it's, you know, cut and paste, uh, boilerplate from year to year and it's time that maybe we bring everything into current situation. So.
No, I can certainly, I can certainly reach out to, uh, our auditor. So you said it's page 22 of which.
Well, it's, it's around there somewhere. It's, uh.
Which section? Cause we get three different books.
The only audit I got, I got from Ears, uh, up there in Hartford and it's in there. It's part of the standard audit or, or narrative, I think, that goes into a municipal budget. And who, what, when, where, how and why. And then they get around to the dollars and cents. And some of that is old. That's all.
All right, I'll see what I can find, then I'll have a conversation with, with John. Um, obviously this is my first audit with the city, but I can certainly sit down with, uh, Rich and Kim and see what, uh, what may, what may have transpired in the past and get that corrected.
Yeah, Kim is aware of it. I've had, uh, email conversations with her and, uh, uh, something fell between the chairs, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll get it back.
That's it.
Thank you, Bill. Other questions for, uh, Mr. Miller tonight from the Aldermen? All right, you got off easy.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, moving on, uh, Chief, Chief Williams from the Ansonia Police Department.
Good morning, having good evening, President. Um, I wanted to first take a minute to thank the mayor for his kind words in his opening statement. Um, I've served the community for 32 years. I look forward to working with the community and some of the greatest police officers you have in the state work in this community. So, um, I also want to thank this board, the Building Committee and all the city officials who helped us, uh, get into our new home. I know we refer to it as a building or a facility, but, uh, we like to call it a home. So, uh, they, uh, they deserved it for many years and I appreciate the help in getting us in here. Uh, just a quick update on our staffing levels, um, over the last, uh, couple of months, we have, um, had some retirements. And, uh, we actually lost two of our detectives to retirement recently. So, uh, Detective Steve Adcox and Detective Brian Hart have left the agency of, and retired. So I want to thank them for their service. We are working on replacing, um, some of the missing staff from our agency. We have put some officers on over the last, uh, month. Um, so, uh, we're, we're starting to get back, but we're still down about five officers. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, yesterday we made an arrest in the, uh, bank robbery at Ion Bank that happened, uh, the day we were actually moving our, our facility into, uh, into this, uh, into this building. So, uh, we were able to make an arrest and, uh, and we took that party into custody, uh, yesterday. I kind of wish that was the end of my report, um, but I want to let you know on a more solemn note that, uh, this afternoon we responded to a disturbance on Route Avenue, uh, in Ansonia. There'll be a press release going out shortly. Um, during that incident, um, a female who resided there was the victim of a domestic violence assault and, uh, that victim has passed away. Um, we have a suspect in custody. Um, and our officers are at the scene and will be there throughout the night along with the assistance from the Connecticut State Police. So we aren't going to release any more details, uh, till we conclude the investigation. Um, but I just wanted to make you aware of it as the board, um, because I know some of you live in that area and some of you, uh, uh, have already reached out. So, um, I will answer any questions that you have and, uh, I guess go from there.
I've got a question, um, Chief.
Go ahead, Bill.
And it's regarding the light at Kingston and Main Street. When is it going to be functional?
We are working with, uh, well, we worked with the city. So that's a city owned light that is not a state owned light. So we worked with the city on, uh, trying to figure out a solution to that. And, uh, unfortunately, it's going to have to go to, uh, Marlin Controls. We're going to have to have them come out and, uh, attempt a fix. That is an older box, um, that has had some issues in the past. So we're hoping that this is a easy fix. Um, but, uh, if it is not, then I will be working with the city and, uh, Mr. Miller to try and come up with some, uh, funding for the replacement, um, of that.
I appreciate it. Uh, I've, I've had, uh, comments from people and noticed by myself that that intersection, because now it is getting a little more activity because of the one way on East Main Street. And I think it's just a place where an accident is waiting to happen.
Yeah, we are, we're aware of it, um, Alderman, and I, I assure you, we're trying to get it, uh, a solution to the problem, but, uh, it's going to end up having to be an outside source. Most of the times between ourselves and Public Works, our officers can get them back up and running with a little duct tape and glue, but, uh, that's not working this time.
Yeah, I think it'll be money well spent, um, because it's, it's a hot potato, the way I look at it, uh. It, uh, just an observation, seems like the younger drivers don't how, know how to recognize a flashing traffic light. And I've been sitting there at the red light at Sekhams and here comes a car up Main Street and they stop. And I'm waiting for them to pass because they have right of way and they're stopped at that flashing light. And I say, one of these times someone's going to stop at a flashing light and la bang. And we know how that goes. So I would think, uh, an expeditious repair, um, is in order for, for everybody's concern.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. Any other questions?
Chief, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for, um, I know, um, Alderman, Mamona and myself were hounding you over a period of a couple of weeks along with Public Works for the, uh, mirror at, uh, Highland Ave, Dead Man's Curve, as we call it. And we're, we're thrilled with our funhouse mirrored on the, on the corner there. Um, so, you know, it was a long time coming, but as soon as we asked you, 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 you guys, uh, delivered, so.
I would, I'd love to take credit for it, but I think that would be probably more Public Works, but I'll take credit either way.
But we handed you both, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, not so much of a, a question, but, uh, comments. I just wanted to congratulate you on obviously your new home, getting in there as quickly as you did. It was a pleasure working with you as a member of the, uh, Police Building, uh, Committee. Um, and I also want to thank you personally, um, and the officers. I know I've called you several times over the last couple of weeks and asked you to address things for me. They've been done promptly, efficiently and very professionally. And I wanted to say thank you to you and your officers. So thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work.
You're welcome, sir. And as I said, uh, you should be proud. You have some good officers in this, uh, in this city.
Any other questions for, for the chief tonight?
No, wait, uh, uh, chief, I just thought of something and it has to do with what, um, Alderman Pips was saying about people not stopping at that Kingston Drive area. Um, I think at one point I've seen where they actually had, um, in the street, these stop signs, which maybe if there's a way we could put stop signs on, make it like a four way stop.
Yeah, we're, we can look into it. The problem you have is that when you have a traffic control signal that is operational, I understand it's not red and green, but it is operational with the flashing yellow and the flashing red. You're not supposed to be putting stop signs out there and that is a state road. Um, and it's kind of a weird situation where it's a state road, but it's not a, um, state light.
So it's only when the light is out. It's only when the light is out. Okay.
Yeah, the, only if the light is out, correct.
All right, okay.
But like I said, if we, if we can't get this fixed in the, in the near future, then, uh, you know, we'll have to come up with some other plan, but, uh, I'm hoping that they can come out and find an easy fix. They're usually pretty good with us with some of these problems.
No problem. Okay.
Other questions for the chief tonight? All right, thank you for coming.
President, short, the only thing I'd say is if you, uh, I'm not going to be able to stay on. Uh, I've got things that we need to take care of with this case. So if you need me, um, please call myself and I will, uh, I'll call you back, but I'm going to sign off on the meeting unless you need me there.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate it and good luck.
All right, thanks, sir.
All right, do we have any other public officials? I don't think, um, see anybody on here. So we will move on to committee reports. Finance Committee.
Uh, I'll make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Second.
Pay all bills by Mamon, second by Stroman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Right, motion carries unanimously. Um, let's see, do we have any other, uh, committee reports from the Aldermen? Going once.
Uh, one, one thing I will say is that in terms of, uh, ordinance, if anybody has, uh, any other ideas, I know I did get an email from Alderwoman Tar about a potential ordinance idea and one of our resident mentioned something to me. So we're likely going to have a meeting. I have to have a discussion with court counsel um, as to when that meeting will be, but I will make sure everybody knows about it, um, probably next three weeks or so. Um, when I get that together. And the only other thing I would say is that Temporary Regional School Study Committee is still going on. Next meeting is the 23rd of this month at 7:30 PM. Um, all are welcome to attend. Uh, we're getting down to it and likely we'll have a vote on feasibility in the next several meetings, either end of November or at some point in time in December, so.
Great. Last call for, um, subcommittee reports. All right, so we'll move on to the municipal reports. Um, boat did, uh, did not meet in November, so we do not have anything in our packet for that. We also don't have a, I didn't see a land use report in, in the BOA packet either for the month of November yet. Um, so move on to tax collector report and request, uh, for refunds uh, for the month of October.
Um, so.
Go ahead.
Let's say for the month of October, um, the refund report was in the total of $9,726.26. I'd like to make a motion to accept the refund report.
Motion by Mamon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Stroman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, accidents and claims, we have two, um, claims, 1021, 1019 and 1021, 1020.
Motion to refer to court counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to corp counsel by Yamman, second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Pass those on. Uh, we have one communication from the Superintendent of Public Works, Mike DeLassio. This was, um, also in your packet regarding Public Works vehicles and a request, um, Public Works Department is asking for consideration from the Aldermen to allow the auctioning off of the vehicles listed below of which there are two, four, six, eight. Um, said vehicles have various issues, including but not limited to hydro leaks, rot, bad lift gates, heater core, et cetera. By auctioning off these vehicles, it will allow Public Works to purchase additional equipment needed for the department. Thank you for consideration with this request. Please refer in a kind of if you have any questions. November 2nd, 2021.
I, I have a question on this. So Kurt, are these currently on the fixed asset list and I assume these would be fully depreciated? Is that correct?
Uh, they should be, yes.
Um, figures on here, are these the current fair market value on these that are listed?
Uh, I think they're ballpark estimates of those. Um, and what is expected to be getting, what is expected to be gotten, obviously depends on the audit process. Uh, but this audit, this auction here is someone that we've used in the past uh, and tends to be pretty good at making claims because this equipment, um, is purchased by not necessarily local, uh, entities or municipalities or people. A lot of this stuff that heads down south, out to the Midwest, that type of stuff.
Uh, entities or municipalities or people, a lot of this stuff that heads down south, out to the Midwest, that type of stuff.
Okay. It's that's, you know, that's it's a little, little interesting that the auction value and the fair market value somewhat aligned, so it was just questioning. Which value we were actually reporting on here, but all right, thank you for that info.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion approved by Yamun, second by Mamon. Any other discussion on this? All right, uh, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, motion carries unanimously. Um, let's see, where are we at here? No resignations, we have one resolution. Um, I'm gonna put this up here, and I believe. Um, he's here, but I'll put this up here real quick. This is the resolution, it was in your packet. I am not gonna read this. I I tried it as a tongue twister earlier. Um, but um. Is Aaron still here?
He he is Mr. President, but I'm just gonna kick this off, and then I'll pass it to Aaron.
Okay.
Um, and then John will kind of wrap it all up, but um, you know, this is kind of the second phase of the Johnson Controls Project. Uh, when we initially had spoken to all of you and you gave us the authority to move forward. Uh, we let you know that there was about a million dollars of room left. Um, but we hadn't decided yet on how that was going to be used. So we've been doing some work on it over the last uh four, five, six months. And we wanted to come back, as you had requested, to kind of show you what uh we would be doing with that additional capacity. Uh, provide a new resolution for you all to vote on, so that's kind of what this is. So I've asked Aaron to come and just walk us through how we're gonna use this additional capacity. How it's gonna work, and then John can just talk you quickly through the the resolution and address any questions that you have. So with that, Aaron, you want to go ahead?
Uh, thanks, Kurt. I uh, I think I got a video here. Um, okay, so uh, just as as Kurt had mentioned, the original project uh through the savings supported an additional uh. Million dollars of unidentified scope of work at the time. Uh, and so when we did the financing, we did a resolution for existing project, uh, and we did the funding through. Uh, Bank of America, you did the funding through Bank of America with a master leasing agreement, which to get any additional funds requires an additional resolution. The three items that were identified, uh, as we kind of gotten late in the game were uh high-efficiency lighting at the police department. Uh, and high-efficiency rooftop units, so uh the interior and exterior lighting at the at the uh police department. Three hundred and ninety-one thousand and some change, rooftop units, three hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, and then we had a uh. Uh, a roof um at the DPW, so that roof uh was being proposed to uh take it down to the existing. And put a brand-new sixty-mil uh membrane uh white roof, uh reflective roof uh on the DPW building. And so that totals uh just about nine hundred and thirty-one million and some change. Uh, and we thought these were excellent projects, uh, as you continue to look at energy efficiency work throughout the uh city.
Action on that nine hundred thirty-one thousand, not nine hundred thirty-one million, correct?
That's correct, sorry.
You really stretched the dollar.
Leverage.
Few extra commas in there we didn't need. Okay.
Any other uh comments from uh city or Kurt or Aaron? Questions? Joe?
Question.
Yep.
Uh, Alderman Cassetti here, uh, just was wondering, you mentioned the roof at the DPW. Would that include the uh Dog Pound?
I know.
We'll never get to correct that, will we?
Well, we could, but again, we wanted, this project needs to be tied, the money spent from this project. Uh, it kind of needs to be tied in. We needed to put solar panels on the roof of TPW, so that's why there was a need to redo the roof. At TPW, we're we are exploring other avenues uh with the Dog Pound. Actually, Sheila reached out to me. Uh, to get in contact with an engineer uh that I've worked with to come and take a look. At the facility to see what can and can't be done, uh, to correct some of the issues that they're having there, so. Um, while it's not a part of this project, it is something that is absolutely on our radar and being addressed.
Joe, I've been badgering Sheila to take care of our furry friends, to find some uh grant money or something, so.
Yep. Um. We hear you.
Question, um, why can't the Dog Pound have? Solar panels also? I mean, that's a a savings for us.
Uh, absolutely, and so just to address the board, we are looking at additional opportunities. The State of Connecticut's DREC subsidy program uh will be launching in February. So we're doing some discovery around the district for additional revenue generating opportunities. Additionally, Connecticut has come out with a brand-new electric storage, uh, and so that's a battery opportunity. Uh, and that looks like it's gonna be a really good program. They're finalizing this, the specifications uh through November. Uh, and that will be something that we could talk about and go after in February as well, to to subsidize some additional infrastructure.
Thank you for your response.
And again, just to kind of tie up uh what Aaron was saying, you know, we wanted to make sure that we kept these projects. Separate, individualized, so everyone can understand where the money was going and and things like that, so it didn't get convoluted. So.
Yeah. I I I think that transparency is key, Kurt, just to make sure, you know, funds are being used appropriately and just not, you know, uh. You know, just spent on things we shouldn't be spending the money.
Correct, correct.
So, so Kurt, are you saying then that there's not enough money to do uh solar at the animal shelter at this point?
I, Diane, to to Kurt's earlier uh statement, we do, we do want an engineer taking a look at that facility. You know, what's what's the likelihood of remaining there? Can you expand it? Is the structure sound enough to do any of the, any of the types of things you need to do for solar, so? That's gonna be part of it, but yeah, certainly, that's a great idea, I think, if the, you know, if the um. Structure can withstand it, or if it's if it's able to be, um, if it's workable, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that that's a very good question. We just need to make sure. When you put solar on, you're making a commitment for a set period of time, fifteen to twenty years. So, you know, we just have to go enter into these things slowly, and again, that's why we're phasing things in. Yeah, I think we hit all of the structures that we're gonna have long-term. Obviously, the PD's gonna be there for some time, Public Works. Uh, you know, some of the other projects, we're now gonna start looking at some of these other uh buildings that we have to see what their potential. May be, so you know, a- as I said, we, you know, we talked about phase one, two, three, four, and so on, so I think you'll be seeing those uh probably in phase three. Uh, as Aaron had mentioned, you know, we're looking at this, uh, some of this battery storage and things like that, that could be quite um. Could be quite a good opportunity for the city as well.
Um, let me ask uh one more thing, um, are these um panels gonna be um owned or rented?
Please. The the panels are owned by the city.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right.
So, Aaron, oh, sorry, Chicago, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, that's the way to go, okay, because I own mine, and that's a a better deal.
Okay.
We know Chicago.
I'm trying to get you to get some job.
I know you are.
So, so Aaron, the the battery setup, I assume there's uh like additional information or whatever on terms of how the storage works and all that would come back through, or maybe Kurt, you mean, as like a. Presentation to the board here kind of thing?
Uh, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thanks, guys.
But again, we don't want it, we want to keep things separate, so it's easy to understand, be transparent, and.
Yep, got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions on this uh for from any of you? Clarifications?
And then John can obviously answer any questions on the resolution itself.
Yeah.
And the schedule that's attached.
Yeah. Yeah, do you want me to put that back up there? I can, I can put this back up. Because at the bottom, right?
Yeah. While you're scrolling, Josh, I'll make a motion to accept this resolution.
I'll second it.
Do, well, that's what I was, I was gonna, discussion point, just really quickly, is that I, do we need to, is it an accepting of the resolution or authorizing the mayor to execute it? Well, you appr- you approve the resolution, yes, and authorize the mayor to execute it on behalf of the city. Tony, do you want to amend?
I will amend. I I. Uh, make a motion to accept the resolution and authorize the mayor to execute it on our behalf.
And I will second it again.
A motion by Mamon, second by Rivers.
Night Nancy. Hi.
If somebody.
Nancy, you're not on mute.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, resolution passes and will be executed, thank you. Uh, appointments, we have um three sets of appointments, um. We have two appointments in the Historic District Commission. These are both five-year. Um, we have two appointments in the Historical Commission and one in the Superintendent of Veteran Graves, so I'm gonna do them. I guess individually, because uh under Historic Commission, five-year, five-year terms. Um. Uh, appointing uh Jared Heon, Republican of Ten Kylie Lane, term to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Second nominee under uh Historic District Commission, five-year term. Uh, Dan Bosks, Republican of Ninety-Nine Jewett Street, term expiring eleven nine twenty twenty-six.
Motion to accept.
Motion by Cessetti, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Question.
Yep.
Have a question.
Yep.
Uh, is that the same person that's also on a historical commission, even though the name is somewhat different?
Yeah, it's the same person with ones listed as Dan and ones listed as Daniel, same address.
Same one.
Yeah.
Okay, does one have to, and John Marina, you may have to answer this question. Does one have to be on? One, does one have to be on the historical commission, have to be on the? Let me see, the historical com- uh District Commission, does one have to be a member of the historical commission? To be on the historical district commission?
No, no, they should be two and two separate.
Separate, okay.
Shouldn't be a prerequisite. They could be on both, but they don't need to be.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so um. We have. All favor, yeah, all in favor, go back to all in favor? Any opposed? Whether he's Dan or Daniel, we'll go for both, right? All right, motion passes. Uh, under the Historical Commission, these are two-year terms. Uh, first nominee is Thomas P. Clifford, the third Democrat of Ten Southwestwood Road. Term to expire eleven thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Motion by Yamun.
Second.
Second by Rivers, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the second uh nominee is uh Dan or Daniel, he goes by both apparently. Uh, Bosks, uh, Republican Ninety-Nine Jewett Street, uh, term to expire eleven thirty, twenty twenty-three.
I move that um, um, we table this particular nomination with an with an explanation.
Uh, move, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Move to table by Phipps, second by Stroman.
All in favor? Discussion, a point of discussion, please. What are we mo- what are we discussing? What are we trying to learn?
I uh, I I recommend it as part of my motion to uh to discuss it, well, actually, to make um. Make uh public what I've discovered. Um, Mary Gibson is is a current member of the commission. In fact, I believe she's the chairman of the commission. And I know personally that she works very hard in that respect, and she's been spearheading the um. Uh, digitization of the Evening Sentinel, and uh, and she's very committed to the town of Ansonia. And um, because the mayor made the nomination, we don't want to deny it per se. I would hope that the mayor, uh, maybe possibly will pull it back and or restore Mary, because she's deserving of the place. And just as a side, um, when I called Mary to find out, you know, uh, why she was not being nominated. I did this on Sunday, and Mary said, what are you talking about? And I said, you know, I told her what I saw on the paper, and she knew nothing about it. Now that is just poor handling of people. Um, and um, it was very disappointing, but unfortunately, I've experienced, it's not unusual from the city. To just out and replace people and not even tell them, and the people have to find out, that's just lousy personnel relations. But in any case, I think Mary should be uh allowed to stay on. That's why we table this, and then let the, let the mayor possibly uh correct his mistake. So that's my motion.
Okay, so we have a uh motion to table and a second. Any other discussion on this?
Can I just make a comment that I know Mary as well, uh, Mary worked with us on the Valley uh with Elder Service Commission. But I also know the work that she's done on Historical um Commission, even when the senior center closed. She was the one who came to try to ensure that the photos and stuff that we did, the pictures that were on the wall. Um, were going to be preserved and um very, very involved. Uh, I too spoke with her, um, I was surprised to see that she wasn't on. And she said that she wanted to stay on. It wasn't her decision to be off. So I think if you have somebody who's dedicated and committed, we need to look at, um, you know, letting them be, still be involved. So, I mean, that's why I asked if you have to be on one to be on the other, so. That's my reasoning for for that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, so how do we want to, uh, so clearly, we're gonna have.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you have three?
Only five.
The ma- the mayor, those are the mayor's appointments.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, so Josh, proceed.
So, motion a second to table, uh, since I'm anticipating that's not, this is not gonna be unanimous one way or another. Uh, should we, do we do a roll call vote on this?
Yep.
Or, yep, all right, Trish, can you do that? All right, so motion to uh table, this appointment of Daniel Bosks of Ninety-Nine Jewett.
Okay, um. Motion to table was by Stroman, so Alderman.
No, motion by, second by Stroman.
A second, I, yeah.
Okay, Alderman Phipps.
Uh, yes.
Alderwoman Tar?
No.
Alderman Cassetti?
No.
Alderman Genetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Stroman?
Yes.
Alderman Yamun?
No.
Alderman Rivers?
No.
Alderman Mamon?
No.
Alderman Schurt?
No.
That is a total of six, no and three yes. Am I missing somebody?
Dan.
Dan, sorry, Dan, okay.
Wow.
All right, then the, then it's seven no and three yes. So it's open fails.
All right, motion fails, so. Now moving back on, do do we have a motion to approve this proposed appointment?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Motion by Mamon, second by Yamun. Uh, should we do the same?
Yes, roll call.
Fire it up.
All right.
Don't forget Dan.
I won't forget Dan this time, sorry. Alderman Mamon.
Yes.
Alderman Yamun.
Yes.
Alderman King.
You're up, Dan.
He's calling it in.
I'll go back to Alderman King after. Um, Alderman Phipps.
No.
Alderwoman Tar?
Yes.
Alderman Cassetti?
Yes.
Alderman Genetti?
No.
Alderwoman Stroman?
No.
Alderman Rivers?
Yes.
Alderman Schurt?
Yes.
Alderman King, are you back?
Yes, um, about that.
Yeah, okay, seven yes and three no.
Okay. All right, and the last uh nomination is Superintendent of Veteran Graves. Uh, proposed, um, Thomas Henry, unaffiliated of Seven Hawkins Road. Term to expire eleven thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Thomas Henry, unaffiliated of 7 Hawkins Road, term to expire 11/31/2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Ordinances, we have none. Um, new business, we have three items. The first item is the number one, Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan, update 2021/2026. Sheila, can you speak to this a little bit? I did send the document recently, but can you explain it a little bit, boil it down?
Sure, and I also have Jared Heon here, who's been involved in planning and putting together some of our Ansonia's portion of the document, as well as Noah Slovan from the NVCOG. So this is our, this is Ansonia's Hazardous Mitigation Plan, which was put together with Public Safety Input, our Emergency Management Director and EMS. And this has to be ratified. It's a plan for the entire Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments. Noah, if you want to jump in, I just, just want to, hope I'm not missing anything.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can hop in. Yeah, so this is, uh, what I have is that it's Ansonia's second time adopting a natural hazard mitigation plan. And the previous version was also multi-jurisdiction, a multi-jurisdiction plan, so that means that it's kind of been developed at the, it's funded, sorry, first of all, Noah Slovan, I actually worked for SLR Consulting, the company consulting with NVCOG to do this planning. So NVCOG got the funding to conduct this planning effort at the regional level, but it's still kind of a conglomeration of individual, single jurisdiction plans that are kind of supported by a multi-jurisdiction document. Um, and, and part of the approach here is that you can have a kind of shorter, more manageable local document with a lot of supporting materials that FEMA requires in a larger multi-jurisdiction document. So it's as, as Sheila was saying, it's gone through, you know, we worked with municipal staff and it's gone through some edits and public input and VCAG input, and then it went to the state for review and then to FEMA for final review, and has at this point been approved pending adoption by FEMA. So what's, what's required to make the, the document active is just local adoption by, by this board. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. But I guess my last, my last point would be that having an active plan makes you eligible for funding from FEMA through, through their different funding programs, and currently the HMDP and the BRIC grant cycles are active, so the, the sooner that the plan can be adopted, the sooner you can apply for those grant opportunities.
Can I ask, when I was, I was actually, no, that was one of my questions, is this opens up grant opportunities? Does it open up grant opportunities with deep as well? And is this a document that's necessary with deep in certain circumstances?
Um, I, I honestly don't know. It's, it's typically helpful for, for any kind of granting organization to see projects within a, a planning document, so if you have something in the plan and can point to it too deep and say, look, we have this in our hazard mitigation plan that we've just adopted, that would probably help, but I, I don't know whether they have it as a specific requirement for any of their funds.
Okay, because the reason I was asking is because I, I saw on pages, it's like 38 through, maybe it's not that. Yeah, it's about 38 through 52, and the enumerated projects and the timelines there. Are the enumerated projects are the ones that given preference for grant funding? With this document?
Uh, yes, it, it is, you can apply for grants that are not specifically listed in the document. You kind of have to be a little more creative when you point out to FEMA, for example, how the document supports a given action if it's not specifically listed. Um, but the specific actions listed, those are the ones that would be kind of preferentially funded by FEMA. Um, you know, I, I'm sure Deep would refer, you have an action plan. Again, I don't know specifically for Deep what they would want.
Sure, and then, um, final comment was on page 59 in the resolution that was proposed. We are both referred to as City Council in the document and the Board of Selectmen, we are neither, so. I would just point that out before the final documents execute.
Thanks. And I can, I can make that correction, or, um, I don't know if, if someone on your end has to make a kind of local version anyways before you adopt it. Not sure how that works.
We can adopt it, assuming that, that correction was pointed out. That's, that's a minor piece. Uh, other questions on this document?
President Schur, can I just interject one, one thing on this? It's Jared. We work as the EOC on this because it encompassed all the public safety departments, as well as public works, as well as the city engineer. Uh, we focused on flooding and flood controls and kind of dovetailing with deep with the, uh, with the dam, uh, recertifications and studies that the city has done with deep, uh, both Fountain Lake and the Quinlan Reservoir, uh, and some of the flood control stuff on downtown as well. So there was a, a big emphasis on that, but we ran it all through the EOC because it involved all the different departments. Uh, this was done quite some time ago. Uh, thank you to NVCOG and the consultants for working on it, and Aaron, our senior planner, um, with that, and I hope that you guys support it, and it opens us up for FEMA funding in the future and more regional projects together with the COG.
Great. Uh, are there any questions from the Aldermen on this? All right, we have a motion to accept this plan update.
I'll make the motion with the correction of one of all of them.
Motion with the correction of Board of Aldermen by Alderman Rivers, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Cassetti, beat you in there, Joe. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion carries, thank you. Uh, item number two under new business, it says Mayor Cassetti, dissolution of Police Building Commission. I know he thanked the, the Police Building Commission for their work at the, at the outset. And since the building is occupied, I suppose that there's no need to have that commissions. Do we have a motion to dissolve that?
Don't move.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers. Oh, Cassetti?
That's right.
I missed it.
All right, take it over.
Take it on, Joe.
Motion by, yeah, I'm in second by Cassetti, sorry, Joe, I didn't.
Yeah, discussion please.
Yep. Go ahead.
I think this is a motion that is, is irresponsible at its best. I don't know what, uh, what the cloud, the people are living on, but they haven't finished their charge. They haven't finished producing what they started out to, was a police station that consists of four floors, tour parking and tour occupied. As far as I know, as of today, the parking was still closed. So we, it's been a real hush-hush around town, but the way I see it, the job's not done. When they were opening the back door, Frank Pepe was fixing the drainage in the front door. And, um, the, it's, it's inappropriate, and the last meeting of the, uh, the commission, a couple of weeks ago, one of the members, Mr. Olivermy, made comment to and requested an update on the financing and where the commission stood with respect to what they had, what they spent, and so forth. And I haven't seen one myself, and I've been following the commission for quite a while. And that's a very big part of what their mission was, was to make sure that that money was spent properly and to just arbitrarily right now say, okay, guys, thanks a lot, take it, hit the road. I think that's inappropriate and we should not do it. We should keep that commission active and expect a report. A commission that's formed to spend $15 million should make some kind of a report and have a conclusion to their activities before they're sent on their way. That's my opinion.
Any other discussion?
Can I make a comment on that? So I know in the past, we've, we've had tenor construction come in and provide some of that oversight. And I know Kurt, we've worked with you in terms of, you know, gathering some of that financial data, so is it wrong to think, yeah, well, it's under the committee, there's additional oversight that lives, whether it was from tenor or directly with the city?
Um, yes, well, I mean, first off, I'm horrified to hear that a board member has no idea where their budget stands. I mean, that by itself should be a reason to get rid of the committee. You know, I, I, I mean, you should be, I, I wouldn't expect them to have an exact dollar amount. But they should be able to say with some certainty, hey, we're probably going to be over 100,000, 1.2 million, something like that.
I just, I just committed.
That's horrifying to me.
From the minutes, I read the minutes.
Uh, but, but I'm saying, that alone should be a reason to completely dissolve a committee. You're charged with putting a $15 million building up. And you have board members that have absolutely no idea where they stand financially. How are they making decisions on what to do and what not to do? If they don't know how much money they have.
That's a good question.
So. You know, guys, let, let me say from, uh, from staff's point of view, obviously we have more oversight than ever on the project in terms of the owner's rep. Um, we're very thankful for the building commission on the work they've done, but it's time to gel what the Police Building Committee has done with the rest of the building. You know, the bottom line is the entirety of this building needs to be done. That includes the PD and our senior center and any other space that's going to serve the public. We need to ensure that the overall picture works, and we can't do that in isolation. So basically, you know, i- it's a job successfully done. We're very proud of what we have with the PD, but now we sort of have to defer to that big picture, and the oversight is going to be everywhere from Kurt and Finance to our owners' reps, to, yes, members of the Police Commission, members of the Senior Commission. We need to circle the wagons, come together and make sure this project as a whole stays on budget and on course. We look forward, of course, to opening, you know, cutting the ribbon for the police station. They're there now, but we want to cut that ribbon in a month. But we want to cut a ribbon for our seniors as well, and we want to do that in spring. And in order to do that, time to start thinking globally on, on this building. You know, we don't want to have any excuses for our seniors and the residents looking to also call that building home.
Yeah, well, I don't see what that mission has to do with just keeping the commission active and available if and when they're needed, because.
We'll always call them in. We, we will never turn.
Once you dispose of them, they're gone, and they'd have to be reappointed. And they can sit on their hands for the next six months, but at least they're there in case we need them, and the fact remains that the police part of the building is not finished.
The, the.
Parking is not available.
The mayor would like to dissolve the commission.
Well, that's okay. The mayor can make mistakes too, so, uh, he's got a lot on his plate, so I, I don't think he'll be troubled too much if the commission is still active. Uh, I mean, he already laid the gauntlet down this morning on WICC for all the hair. He all but told Derby, come up with the part of the, senior center, or we're going to shut off your gas and, and melt all your salt. Uh, and I said, oh, boy, that's.
Mr. President.
Late if I ever heard one.
Mr. President, you have a motion in a second, I believe.
Yeah. Thanks for shutting me up, Tony, I appreciate it.
It had nothing to do with this, but here, Bill, talking about salt and gas.
Yeah, Sheila brought in the fact that the mayor said, and I just wanted to bring to people, you probably don't know what he said this morning on the radio. I mean, it shook up my.
Mayor still wants to dissolve the commission bill.
Mr. President, proceed.
Hey, I'll do it on my schedule there, my friend.
Tell him, Mr. President.
Uh, any other discussion on this?
I think moving forward, it could probably be handled by committee.
Um, I, I just want to make a comment. Uh, I understand where Kirk is coming from. If you have a commission and they don't even know how much they've spent or how much they have to spend, what good are they doing then? I mean, he has a very valid point.
Thank you, Chicago. All right, now let's vote. Motion in a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed, Phipps? Any other opposed? All right, one, one opposed, any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Uh, third item under new business is the facade application. As I mentioned, uh, we, we discussed this in subcommittee before this meeting. Um, and we approved and sent to the full board. Um, this was the application for, and you guys should have received, all received this previous. This is the right application. I can put it up if we need.
Diane, you got this one?
Yeah, I got this one.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it up real quick, just for you, for in case you don't remember.
This the coffee bar?
This is, uh, right. Um.
On, on West.
Cafe on.
West Side Shopping Center.
Yeah, 11 B, Hippo Street. Uh, cafe, serving coffee, alcoholic beverages, food, request for 5,000, the budget was a little over 5,000 there. It is a, there's a description of the, the work to be done at the back of the application here. And then there's a little drawing over here um, of some of the work. The, the limit's 5,000, so that would be capped at that, but the, the amount was going to be a little bit more that was going to be spent. So how do we want to proceed?
Make a motion that the application be accepted.
Acceptance by Strowman, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining tonight? All right, motion carries. Congratulations to them. Uh, is there any other, is there any old business? There's nothing listed here, but does anyone have any old business?
Um, yes, I do. Um, I, I, I kind of wanted to, uh, know when, when we, when will we have the next ordinance meeting? And John, um, we are still waiting on that documents about our cats. Josh, he was supposed to send us down a couple of foxes down here, but he didn't do that either.
You didn't say, we're still waiting on, uh, you didn't say what I think you said. If it's desired.
No, I mean, the language of it, I mean, I, I mean, I know it's there, but the language.
We, we could, I, you know, I would say if, if we would invite maybe Genie down to our next meeting to, to kind of have a, a discussion as to what we can do and maybe get a consensus.
Yeah, because I got a whole, um, I'm a whole pamphlet, um, from her, so.
All right.
I'm gonna reach out to her and Josh, if we have a meeting date, you know, we, we'll definitely revisit that language. I can distribute what we had last time before we meet.
Okay, thanks.
For the record, Mr. Rivers, those are coyotes.
Okay, well, coyotes. Are you supposed to send a couple of them down?
Okay.
Hey, Josh?
Yes.
Could we just, I want to put a note on the record regarding the solar farm that's, uh, appears to be moving forward within the sixth ward on Ben Street that, um, we did, I, I did receive several notifications about it from the residents. Um, you know, we just had, we've had some conversations with the mayor, uh, you know, we got to loop back in with, uh, you know, court counsel and, you know, we're gonna, we, we got a couple ideas, you know, for the residents, so we just want to, want to state that on the record that, you know, we want to revisit that with them, just to provide some clarity on what exactly is, uh, you know, is occurring and what options, if any, we may have.
I'll, I'll second that in that, uh, we're on the record in the papers even opposing this, going back years. Um, and they kind of slipped it in on a, on a redo, but, um.
Yeah, and, and obviously we were upset with the decision, to say the least. This is something we opposed early on. Um, we did achieve a victory. It was actually rejected by the Citing Council in what they purported to be a final decision. Um, the developer then lobbied to overturn the final decision. We, as an intervening, meaning, as an intervening party objected on the record, objected to being, uh, to, to, to the developer being able to reconsider, to the, the Citing Council being able to reconsider. Unfortunately, Citing Council eventually ruled that. Uh, unfortunately, siding council eventually ruled that they didn't have the ability to be bound to the final decision. Um, changes uh, that, that the developer made, um, protecting inland wetlands and wildlife was found, was found sufficient, sufficient to the siding council to proceed with the project. But it's the siding council's decision. It's important to point out, city never had any um, any ability to approve or deny the project. We simply objected to it and pressed the siding council to reject it. Obviously, we're, we're not happy that it was approved. Um, there will be some safeguards put in to protect wildlife and also to hide the panels from view. Uh, a circle of our brevities trees need to be put in, but the city will still be monitoring the process. So the next phase is to be installation of the solar panels themselves. Before that is done, the plans have to be submitted to the city and we will have the ability to comment. Um, it's my hope to be able to gather the residents to review those two, phase two plans and to give a response together. Additionally, um, the, the developer will need approval from the city to tie in to our utilities. They're going to need a written letter that the city sends to deep. So before that is done, we're going to be talking to the developer about further mitigation, especially in terms of visibility for the residents. And also, um, how the city will be compensated for its services, as if the city is going to have its fire ready, um, and any of its other city services at the ready. Um, we, even though this may not be taxable because of state law, because of what the state has created, um, there, there must be a way to get a payment in lieu of taxes or potentially um, some other way of getting compensated. But we're going to be looking at this very closely. Um, but obviously, we want the residents to know that we were fighting against it and unfortunately, with the siding council, we do not have the control that we otherwise would have with zoning, our zoning boards. Um, we're not, um, you know, the zoning law was not applicable here. The siding council takes uh, jurisdiction over these special issues, and that is an act of the state that they have discretion over these green energy projects. That is something the legislature created and that the city does not have the ability to override.
Mr. Marina, I just, I want to, I just want to equip the residents in that area with what exactly, again, like you said, you know, is it visible from the street? Is that a violation? Something along those lines, because they are the true eyes and ears in that area. You know, if they have to look at it each day, I want to make sure that it, it stays within the confines of what the siding council approved. And, and anywhere that, you know, it does not meet what they approved, w- we, we need to escalate that back to, to get it remediated.
Exactly. So Dave Blackwell has a full set of the plans. He's been closely monitoring it to make sure it, it conforms to what the siding council has actually approved. Um, and again, we want to facilitate this dialogue with the residents, so they understand that we are looking at this very carefully. Now, what happens if it, if it starts to diverge from what the siding council has approved? Essentially, we have to go to the siding council. And we have to request that they enforce their plan. So it's very hard, I know, for us to accept that our zoning board does not have power here. That our, um, normally we have the ability to put on a cease and desist, um, to be able to stop a project until it complies, but zoning here is on, i- i- it falls under the jurisdiction of the siding council. Now, that's not the case for other permits, for other building permits, however, such as electrical. So of course, we're going to have our other building inspectors doing their jobs and making sure this does conform to the laws that we can apply. And like I said, th- there is some leverage here in that they need to hook up the city utilities. Um, and uh, that's going to take a voluntary action of the city. Um, and, and we're going to make sure that i- if, if need be, if we have to move forward with this, we're going to mitigate the situation as much as possible for the residents.
And John, that was my question, is that, so the, the plan that's been approved by the siding council is exempt from any local planning and zoning uh, regulations, uh, as well as any inland wetland regulations on that particular site?
Yeah, they take the place for, for zoning. And, and I will say, the considerations that led to the siding council originally rejecting their proposal, denying it, um, were all related to inland wetlands, protection of environment, protection of wildlife. And obviously, when you're talking about these matters, um, there, that's exactly what the siding council was looking at. They're not going, you know, the city, obviously, they know is against the proposal, but it takes more than that. You know, you need to show an impact to the environment that cannot be remedied. And originally, there was big concern about the distance of the project from inland wetlands, about species such as box turtles. However, the developer was able to change and modify their plans so as to satisfy the siding council's concerns to show that the population of uh, turtles would be protected and that there would be appropriate buffers from inland wetlands. Again, this is not something the city ever agreed to. We do not have the, we did not have the authority to agree. Um, but unfortunately, if it passed siding council, we, we did not have the power to overrule siding council. It's basically a board of attorneys that the state appoints with a specific purpose of facilitating projects that the state incentivizes, green energy projects, such as these solar farms.
Uh, look in my uh,
All right. Um, any, anything else under uh, old business? Okay, that, that ends the agenda. We have uh, we have two items under executive session.
See it?
Uh, number one, and then the new number two, uh,
You don't see it?
You're not on mute, Diane.
Oh, sorry.
No, but he didn't see it, Diane.
We have a motion to go into executive session. Anybody?
Motion. Motion.
Motion by Mamone, second by Rivers. All right, John.
Diane, don't get lost on me, all right?
I'm gonna try not to.
Let's go.
Who are the numbers um, that we need to look out for? The telephone numbers?
Uh, Dan, the six-two-eight-one. I think that's it. Thirty-second.
Okay, do it all over again.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Tar to come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, we have two matters in executive session in the matter of uh, Payne versus City of Ansonia pending litigation.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Yaman, second by Mamone. All in favor?
Aye.
I thought we were going to deny it.
I thought we were taking no action because John said he could work with that.
Hmm.
All right. Uh, any opposed to this? Okay, motion or uh, item number two, forty-eight Silver Hill Road.
Motion authorized corp counsel to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers to proceed as discussed in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right.
All right, hold on, wait, wait, before Chicago hits it. Just want to pass, it was the, I know he comes quick with that one. I just want to pass a congratulations to Mr. Genetti and the Genetti family on the birth of their
Yay.
Tony, thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, Joe.
Congratulations. And um, um, I wasn't going to hit it too fast because um, I, I, I really wanted to thank Diane, okay, because I have a lot of fun with her and um, Pips. Good work, but you know I'll be seeing you, Diane.
Pips is gone.
We lost Pips in the net. So, older woman, Strowman, obviously, we have a lot of work to do to get the senior center to where it needs to be, that, that's going to be something we could all be proud of and, and you're very much going to be part of this process uh, to get there. So that's our next big uh, frontier here for the spring.
I have enjoyed my time on the board.
You will be missed, Diane.
I don't agree on things, but I think it's okay.
Yes. It's okay.
Uh, you know, as lady and gentleman, so I appreciate the support that I've gotten and um, I appreciate what I've learned from everyone on the board. And of the love. Thanks, Diane.
Thanks, Diane. You'll be missed, Diane.
Can I make uh,
Rivers, hit it.
Request for
No, wait. I want Diane to be the one who's going to close this out.
Hang on, hang on. I want to make a request. Uh, I know Christmas is coming up and I was hoping that Bobby, you helped collect presents. Maybe we can do that for Genetti. Because otherwise, that kid's going to get tires for Christmas.
I make a motion that
Small coyotes?
Tire swing, it's, come on, every kid loves a tire swing.
Little jam.
I'm an old bald tire. Come on, Joe.
So I officially make a motion that the meeting, that the meeting of November be closed.
Motion by Strowman.
I will second that.
Second by absentee Bill Pips. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. H- happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving, thank you, everyone.
All right, bye.